Good evening. Let's get started with tonight. We want to convene a special meeting regarding possible bond election concepts, processes, considerations, and projects and recognizances. Coto County Manager, you introduce the subject.
Thank you very much Chairman and Commissioners. This is your first budget focus area work session, but actually your second budget work session that we are doing for the fiscal year 16, 17 budget. Fifteen, sixteen. I've just decided to skip this year completely.
It'll still be there, you can ignore it.
You can ignore it. As the Chairman indicated, what we're going to be discussing today is the potential for future bond elections relating to capital programs, not only for Union County government, but for US UCS, the Union County Public Schools, as well as South Piedmont Community College. At the end of the discussion today, Mr. Yates and I will be looking for some direction from the Board as it relates to specifically the county projects, as to whether or not they should remain on the list or not, because part of our process, Jeff will go into this in much more detail, but part of our process is if we're going to go forward with a bond election, our objective is to get you the most accurate pricing on any projects as we possibly can. So with that, I will turn it over to Jeff Yates, the Administrative Services Director, and the CFO for Union County.
Thank you. Okay, as Cindy pointed out, we're going to start, this is really our second budget work session, but our first focus area work session. If you remember back, first, the meeting in February, we talked through our projections report, we kind of laid out three main areas we want to focus on this year. We talked about really VFD funding, possible bond election, then ultimately, first meeting, and I believe first meeting in April, we're going to wrap up with a discussion of the revenue rate, tax rate, and the rebalance, how that all impacted. Now, keep in mind, kind of our process we worked through, because I know some of you are new this year with this budget process, is instead of kind of working across the entire budget and all the little pieces, we try to work on several major issues and make substantial improvement in those areas. Otherwise, we could spend a lot of time and not have a meaningful impact, not have a meaningful improvement on service operations, on services in the county, and those kinds of things. So that's how we really kind of evolved to the budget focus area process. And this then being the very first of those three budget focus areas of possible bond elections. So for today, we're going to talk about some of the concepts around the bond election, why we have them, the theory behind it a little bit, because I think it's important kind of to ground yourself in understanding why you go out to the voters, what you're kind of allowed to go out to voters for, and those kinds of things. The bond election process, as Cindy mentioned, tonight at the end, we're going to be asking for some direction, you can see at the very bottom, board direction, because it's a process. It's not something that we can do quickly and thoroughly on short notice. And Cindy's heard me say a hundred times, I don't believe we do anything well really fast. So the more direction and the more lead time we can get, the better that process can be. We're going to talk a little bit about the considerations and a council for the debt sinking fund, which is a little different for Union County, has been used in the recent past. Then we'll talk about some possible county bond election projects, and the South Piedmont Community College bond election projects, and Dr. Seedorf's here with us tonight, so we have his list, some UCS bond election projects, and we won't talk about specifically, but the projects we'll talk about conceptually, because we obviously don't have the CCEP completed yet. And then board direction. I wanted to talk a little bit about, one of the things we're doing different this time than we have in the last couple of years, at least since I've been here, is we prepare what we're referring to as a focus area working paper. And what we thought through was, we give you a lot of information through the presentation, and my presentations don't have a lot of detail in them, they're more talking points. So we put all this information out to you first, and then ask you to make a decision. Well, this time what we wanted to do is give you some more narrative detail, and I believe each of you received in draft form for initial review and discussion, the working paper that kind of walks you through what we're going to talk about, the different components of what we're going to talk about today, so that when you come into these meetings, you have an additional background, additional facts ready to go. And this information will be available and posted after tonight's meeting to our website, our first thing in the morning, for the public to see, as well as the video and everything will be available. So what this does, the budget area focus, budget focus area working paper, provides more of a narrative approach or a more detailed discussion. All of the points I've made, pretty much in the working paper, we're going to talk through as we go through the presentation, but it kind of gives you that initial informational point about what's going on, what we're talking through. So bond election concepts. What are they, why do we have them? Well, the North Carolina Constitution allows you, as a commission, to go out for referendum for just a few things. And one of those significant things is uncovering or creating liabilities for local government through the issuance of general obligation bonds. The point of the referendum is to allow the public, to authorize you as the commission, to commit or dedicate, essentially commit, promise tax revenue or general, or property tax revenue to the bond market. Okay, so a general obligation bond is exactly that, it's a general obligation of the government. When you go out to borrow that, you are essentially pledging your tax revenue. So the Constitution envisions then that you would ask the public, instead of deciding like you do, for instance, on revenue bonds and those other types of debt, you can, you as a board can decide that. For GEO debt, the public will need to vote on that. And so there's been a lot of discussion then, okay, so you have that initial, for instance, you have, let's say the public approves a hundred million dollar bond program. And once you've paid that off, there's these other things called two-thirds bonds, okay? This question kind of keeps coming up, we discussed it in pretty good detail at our working group with the schools concerning the election. And I think there's been kind of this theory floating around out there that two-thirds bonds are a new debt or something different than general obligation debt. Essentially, a two-thirds bond then takes what you had originally voted on in a referendum, recycles that authorization as approved by the voters, and allows you then to issue two-thirds of that original authorization. Now, that's still new debt, and it still requires debt service. So as you go through, and we're paying down our debt every year because general obligation debt in North Carolina is structured in a declining principal structure, unlike your house mortgage where you're probably paying a level payment for the next thirty years or fifteen years. In North Carolina, for GEO debt, every, your first year is your highest payment, and every year after that it goes down, and you're paying off principal. Well, allows you then, the two-thirds allows you then to issue two-thirds of that principal from the year before that you'd paid off. But like I said, that doesn't mean that your debt service is changed, except that it goes up because it's new debt. Does that kind of make sense for everyone? So really, two-thirds, and I think the key is, the two-thirds is really just a recycling of bond authority. Has nothing to do with the type of debt that you go to the market with, or with the payback of it, or the amortization of it, or anything else. So this theory that's floating around out there that tends to be communicated in two-thirds of debt is kind of new money or free money, that's not true. All that concept does is recycles that voter authority to issue that general obligation debt, and it's still new debt, okay? What types of projects should be included in a bond election? There's a whole range, pretty much any lawful purpose under the government, you can borrow money for, but this falls into the category of because you can doesn't mean you should. And one of the key kind of theories that sits out there when we're looking at bond elections, and the presentations behind, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, the presentations behind the tab, or the presentation, so feel free to, if you want to follow along, you can also follow along in the white paper. The concept of asset life matching is the notion that you should only borrow money for things that are going to last over the life of the debt. So you wouldn't go borrow a thirty-year mortgage to replace your stove or your refrigerator, or you wouldn't want to go take out a fifteen-year note to buy a car. So when we look at what we're talking about for GEO elections and for bond election, what we really want to look at are things that have a long-term lifespan. GEOs are generally twenty to twenty-five years over the payback period. I think the normal in North Carolina is twenty years, I think twenty-five is probably the outer hedge. So really, we're talking about the types of projects that should be included in a bond election. We're really talking brick and mortar and infrastructure types of projects. New buildings, significant renovations of buildings, significant renovation programs across multiple buildings, those kinds of things. And where this becomes important, when you see our list, our list kind of follows that guideline, but as we are working through and we'll get from the schools, the CCEP program, I think what we're going to see is, that's going to have to be partitioned into really two buckets. It's going to be pay-as-you-go bucket for those projects that don't really have a lifespan for something you want to bond fund, and those projects which you would want to bond fund, and those will ultimately become, if you so choose, to be a bond election program. Does that kind of make sense? And I think we've talked about that before, but I think it's real clear. And this is why your capital, your capital project or your capital improvement management policy talks, says that a project has to have a ten-year lifespan or a hundred thousand dollar base value before it even makes it into our capital program. So we've written our policy to kind of match this concept. And then also, like I said, you have a lot of things that are listed in the general statutes that you're allowed to issue debt for, but most of them aren't advisable to issue debt for, or issue some shorter term debt, which there are other tools to use. So that falls under the could versus should discussion. Just because the state general statute's envisioned that we are allowed to, doesn't mean that we should actually do that. So the bond election process. I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, if you remember, they changed the general statute that you're only allowed to have the bond election or your elections during even number of years when there's countywide elections, okay? So our next opportunity for that, we have three of them coming up in sixteen, be the presidential election in February, the commissioner primary in May, and then the general election in November. And if you don't exercise one of those three options, then your next opportunity is going to be in May of 2018 before you can have that election. Used to, before they made that change to the general statute, you could hold them during different times in the odd number of years, but that's no longer applies. In fact, really, I think the concept of the general statute is that anytime you're holding a countywide election, that's when you're supposed to be able to go out and do, go out and do the bond election. And that saves money. I've been talking with our Board of Elections folks, and we asked about the bond election and if it would cost us more. Their comment was, because you're doing it on a countywide election date, there's no additional cost for doing the bond election. So I think that's a good move, but it does have ramifications. And we're here talking to you today in March, that first date is now eleven months away, and that's really tight when we lay out the process. I kind of look at, look at the bond election process in a couple of pieces. What we're going to ask you today is hopefully to establish what we refer to, or what I refer to as a preliminary slate of projects. And that doesn't mean that those are the projects that are finally going to be on the ballot, or even make, that we're going to have a ballot, but helps us to whittle down and spend our directed focused staff time to try to get you good estimates on those projects. So you see the second step is refine projects estimates and develop operating budget impacts. There's very specific language based on having some discussions with our bond counsel about what's allowed to be on the ballot itself, but we're also allowed to provide information about those individual projects. So the ballot language reads something like approval of a project and the appropriate tax rate to fund the debt service for that project. It doesn't allow for a specific tax rate to be placed in the language. But during our process of vetting it, we're going to look at what the tax rate impact of each of those projects are. And it's really, when you're looking at a project, there's two pieces that kind of, kind of impact the tax rate. It's the debt service, that's the easy, that's the obvious one, but you also have the operating budget impact, because some of the things that are on all three, some of the things that are going to be in common for all three other programs, there may be new buildings. Well, a new building, you still have to heat it, cool it, you know, put staff in it if it's a public facility. There's computers and computer replacement, there's wear and tear, there's cleaning it, there's all these different things. So when we're talking about refining the projects, we're going to take the projects that you can give us direction on, work through the estimates, get a good project estimate, not just a swag, but a really, hopefully, much better refined project estimate, but then also a refined operating budget impact estimate. And I'll use a library as a good example. You can build a library for thirteen, fourteen, fifteen million probably, but to operate annually, it could be two million dollars to put staff in there to open it to the public. So really, the cost after five, six, seven years that you're paying for that building and the operations, not so much the debt service, the growing cost of that. And you may say, yeah, we want to build a library, that's a great idea, but then when you see the operating budget impact of that, you may not want to commit the county to that operating budget impact, because the worst thing that can happen is build you a library, you know, got a referendum, get voter-approved library, but not have the operating funds to actually open the doors. And that sounds kind of crazy, but it happens more often than you would think, particularly sometimes at fire stations and public safety. For some reason, folks tend to skip right over the operating budget impact. So what I would recommend to you is, once we kind of establish this preliminary slate of projects, is to allow staff, and I'm estimating three to four months of time to refine the project estimates and develop an operating budget impact, and then bring that back to you as a commission, for you to approve what, that final list of projects to be included. And during that same time period, particularly if you get a direction tonight, we will, the CCEP will be completed and refined, we'll work with Dr. Seedorf and his group, if there's any SBCC projects, to make that preliminary list, and get those, all of that information refined, so that when you as a commission vote on that final package for the referendum, or at least that slate, you'll have a very good understanding of both the debt impact, the operating impact, and what you can expect costs for us. And I think that's kind of real important from your, from your seat, because like I said, you want to go out and make a fully informed decision on this. And the other part that Jeff always reminds me, that I always have to tell you in this process, is keeping in mind, we'll be allowed to put information out, factual information, but no government dollars can be used to promote or to fight against the bond referendum. So once it goes out, we're allowed to promote it or work against it, but we can give information and work through that. Does that sound like you? So calling for the election, once you get through that slate of projects, and you've decided which ones are going to be included, there's an adoption of a notice and intent in the public hearing process, and then the referendum in appropriate language. Generally, the rule of thumb is that you have to have that done essentially in the filing period for the next, for the election day you choose. So if it's nine weeks out from the election date, then we're going to do the November, do the February election, then that decision needs to be made, that everything needs to be kind of finished up in November probably, if not sooner, October, November timeframe. And we can work the notice of intent, and there has to be certain days in between. So once you get down to this calling of the election part, we'll have a very specific process we follow, kind of like we do with the budget, where we have to have a public hearing, and you have to adopt certain notices, and a lot of the things we do have those requirements, but we won't let you get off. And it's usually about a, I would say, a four to six week process, just to work it through the commission paces without any special meetings. You can, if you wanted to condense it down, have special meetings, and we'd have to work with Jeff and our bond counsel to be sure we hit all the specific things, because there's no less than ten days between certain things and those kinds of things, so. And then the adoption of the language. And one of the things that we would recommend to you, and when you're thinking about how you would want to put this stuff together on any projects you choose, we would recommend that for the public, you be specific about the projects you choose, so that as they go down through their ballot, they can decide yes or no on whatever the specific item is, not as a slate of like, you know, general government projects for seventy-five million dollars, but it's, you know, four-H Pavilion, Library, Park, you know, Project A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And they may choose Projects A and F, but not B, C, and D, which is entirely possible. But I think that because of the tax impact and your policy of that, when you put out the GEO debt, you'll raise the tax rate to cover that GEO debt, I think giving the public that decision point is important. And when we see the CCEP, we'll have to work through that concept with the CCEP and the schools' projects, because I don't think, if that's a hundred different projects, we don't want a hundred different decisions on the ballot, but it may be by cluster, maybe by some elementary schools. We'll have to think through how that, if you decide to do that. Go ahead.
Have you ever done that in the past, or has it just been, I don't remember it being done like that.
Do you remember the level of detail the referendum language was?
It took me a minute to record it generally.
And there's a reason why, yeah. And I'll explain to you why I want to do it that way, but can, let me kind of do a couple of things, and I'll come back to it. It's in this debt sinking fund concept, and I want to talk about that, but hold on to this, that thought. So when you're going through this decision process to determine what projects you want to put on the agenda, or put on the referendum, these are some things that I would recommend you consider that are kind of best practices, you kind of look through during your debt. These are things we consider as we look at new debt for anything we do in government. The first one, and probably the biggest one, is going to be affordability and taxpayer capacity. One of the challenges that Union County has had historically is that while it was growing rather quickly, that growth was still not sufficient to maintain the growth in operations as well as new debt. So all through the 2000s, when the new schools were being built, and all the new GEO capacities being issued, the rates, the tax rate wasn't going up to cover that. So when it got to 2008, 2009, and all that debt was fully issued, and our peak year for debt was about 2009, we peaked at about five hundred eighty-five million dollars in debt. That full-on debt payment came from all the new construction, the government actually ended up having to lay off a significant number of people to kind of deal with that. And that came out of the services side of the House, not out of the debt side, because once you issue that debt, you have an obligation to pay it, you can't cut back what you're going to pay off the debt. So what ended up happening is services got pinched and reduced the residents in favor of making that debt payment. And in that case, because most of that debt was used for schools, it ended up, the schools' debt service ended up reducing county services, and that was everything across the organization, from parks to planking, to inspectors, to any number of positions. And those are, you know, we talk about 2008, 2009, eighty-eight positions being laid off, and that's partly because there was an increase over time in that rate. And if you go back to our discussion last year during the bifurcated budget process, when we recommended, based on legislation, the funding of about nineteen point five million for schools, what that amounted to was the eight point two cents that could have been, or should have been added over time to cover that new GEO debt. So essentially, last year, you took that, when one bike took all that tax rate that could have been incrementally increased over the years to cover that debt service, and put it into pay-go capital for schools. That didn't go back to our operations, but that went to the pay-go capital side, because for a while, there was no pay-go money going to schools. Capital was all bond savings, which kind of gets back to why we want to do individual projects. But as you go through this, and I think it's important to note, that the growth in the tax base isn't going to be sufficient to support a referendum. But as we looked at it, if you remember, as we went through our projections report, the growth in our operations and just inflationary growth and demand on services is really going to eat up the growth we have in our revenues. Our normal growth in adult loan tax is about one point two percent. Our normal growth in our government operations is right around two, about one point eight. So our growth in sales tax, and we're enjoying fairly decent sales tax growth, is kind of picking up the difference. So just kind of keep that in mind, and that's a really important key, and that's why I think your policy, your capital policy, says it is, if you add new GEO debt, you want to be sure you add the appropriate tax rate to cover that new GEO debt, okay? And that ensures then that you don't harm services in favor of, or reduce services in favor of paying for that debt service, okay? Project essentiality, this is a big issue for the market, because we have to go out and sell the GEO bonds to the public. And what they look at is, what types of projects are we going to spend our money on? And they look at how essential are those projects to the operations of government? And where this really runs into is if you're going to build stadiums and major economic development projects, those kinds of things, that if you go out to issue GEO authority to do that, the courts will look at that unfavorably, and you will end up paying a premium on your rate. And what they can, the thought process in that is that if it's an essential project, and you go out and issue that debt service for it, then you're going to be sure that you pay the debt service. So you're not going to let a bond on a school or a bond on your jail go under, whereas if it's a stadium, or a racetrack, or something, a major economic loan project, you are more likely to let that go, let that project go. So they're looking at project essentiality. We're always talking about our bond rating, and the bond ratings, and what we've heard from our rating agencies is that we have a limited capacity to issue new debt, but because it's referendum debt, we get a little bit of a pass, because you're going to raise the taxes to go there. Their concern goes back to the taxpayer capacity to pay. And bond ratings are important, and the reason why we want to keep them as high as possible is, just like your credit score at home, the lower your bond rating, the more you pay. And I think the last, last I heard, trading from a double A to a triple A is about thirty basis points difference, so thirty basis points on a hundred million dollars is not cheap. So you want to be able to maximize your project funds, so keeping as high a bond rating as possible is important. So as we kind of work through this process and kind of talk about which projects we want to do, we have to look at how those are going to impact our bond rating, how much new debt are you proposing, and how will that impact our bond rating? And we'll have conversations, because the other thing we'll do is, once we know kind of what that slate's going to be, we'll spend time with rating agencies, getting them ready, talking through the projects, and talking about how important those projects are to the community, and what they're going to facilitate as far as growth, because we have some quality of life projects, is that going to allow the community to continue to grow, is it going to facilitate economic development, and those things.
Jeff, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Do you have a ballpark idea of what that debt capacity is?
When we look at, when they look at the load, what they, what they call the debt load, per capita debt, usually they compare it to the median income, and how much of that median income then, with that percentage factor. So right now, if I remember right, I think we're like at twenty-five hundred dollars, give or take, per person, and we've been as high as thirty-one, thirty-two hundred over that time. So they won't tell you specifically, but they'll tell you if you're high, medium, or low, and we've always been medium to high. And we, they do that based on benchmarking process in the boroughs and other communities, and we've always been in the top part of the state. Well, always, I say always, in the last few years, we've been toward the top part of the state. So they take that into consideration. But the things that offset that is higher assessed values on your property, higher income, sales tax, you know, those things that indicate increased taxpayer capacity. And I think this is one of our challenges, is when you're looking at a debt program, and a GEO debt program, there's, every project has its merits, and that's kind of where you'll have to wrestle with this, is each project in there has a lot of merit to someone in the community, just like if you look at all the schools' projects, I wouldn't disagree with a lot of them, they're really all important. However, the taxpayer in Union County does not have an endless capacity to pay for that. And you can have a taxpayer that becomes tax poor because of the impact of the operations and the debt load and everything else. We're capped at a dollar fifty. If we hit up against that dollar fifty number as far as tax, then I believe you'll be way overtaxing your community, but you'll also be in trouble with the general statutes. So when we go through this, looking at the taxpayer capacity issue and affordability, is knowing when your new debt that you would like to add, you're going to offer up to add to the public, actually becomes a negative or disincentive, or impacts your local economy and your local taxpayer to the point where their taxes are taking a material bite out of their disposable income, or a material bite out of their living wage. And that's, I don't have an exact number, it's one of those, you kind of get stratified, but that's one of the things we really have to look at, because like I said, you could do three, four hundred million, I can go to the market and get it, we're legally allowed to get it, I think I could sell those bonds without a ton of trouble, but those can't your taxpayers afford a four hundred million dollar, three hundred million dollar bond issuance. You know, and think about, for every hundred million dollars, you're looking at four to five cents, so if you did a three hundred million dollar bond issuance, it's a fifteen cent tax increase. So our total tax rate, probably north of ninety cents at that point, not having finished rebalance yet.
And that's the key.
So.
We don't know what rebalance is going to do to us.
That's right. And that's kind of why this is an elongated process, and we really want to explore what the impact is. And this always, you know, I harp on this, because of all the things that I want you to see today, and kind of understand is that issue, is you as a body, as the commission, are and kind of understand is that issue, is you as a body, as the commission, are the folks that are charged for worrying about this. No one else is responsible at this level for that issue. Okay? Everybody else, if you think about it, everybody else is asking, right? Everybody has the handout to ask. But you as the commission have to decide to take and give to those folks. So, this is a big issue, I believe, you know, it requires a lot of forththought as we go through this process, understanding those impacts, because it has deep ramifications to the daily lives and the economic development in the community. And I think Chris will tell you the same thing. You know, you can have such a high tax rate, it's disincentive to economic development. So, debt sinking fund, now back to your question. Specific, how specific do you want to be, or should you be on your bond referendum? I think you should be fairly specific, and here's why. Because in the past, what would happen is you'd have a more general project, and let's say, let's just use schools, schools improvements, if that was as general as it was, then that money could be used for any of those school improvements, but there was no limit on that. What I'm proposing to you is that if you use a more narrow-focused question on your referendum, we can set up a sinking fund. Essentially, then you insert the tax rate ahead of the debt, and not issue the debt until you actually have bids in hand for construction. And why that's important is if the, we estimate, let's say, a new elementary school is $18 million. Well, if it comes in at $15 million, that's $3 million that you don't have to borrow. And over the last few years, in the eight, nine, 10 range, the schools would propose a project, let's say it was $18 million, and it would actually come in at 15, then that $3 million would go to other stuff in the schools. And I'm not saying appropriate or inappropriate, I'm just saying that when you as a commission adopted a project that included a new elementary school, and that was done, then there was an extra money that was already borrowed called bond savings. And that did two things. It allowed, you lost a little bit of control from your seat as to where that money went. But it also kept the commissions at that time from, from continuing to have a sustainable funding source for capital. Because in lieu of funding with cash, or funding capital projects that needed to be funded with cash, they would use that bond savings. And where we ran into is when they ran out of bond savings, we had no ongoing source of funding for capital. Remember, all the way back to the $3 million discussion, going, I think it was 13, 14, now? Wow, this is like forever ago. The point of getting the $3 million was to start to go down the road of having a sustainable funding source for ongoing capital, because the schools have 53 schools and other buildings. They have an ongoing, an ongoing funding need. So, to fund it with one-time money or with debt every year is not a sustainable model. And one of the things that I think is a positive in doing the 19 and a half million of the 8.2 cents was that you gave the schools, or you set aside a chunk of money that's an ongoing funding source. And that's a sustainable structure, a funding structure for their ongoing capital. And now, you marry that with significant bond election projects, you have a capital program that is sustainable for both the taxpayer, as well as the schools and the county. Whereas before, when you would just use the bond savings, that wasn't sustainable. That bond savings is going to run out eventually, it's more like a savings account. Okay? So, when I answer your question, if you're specific in that, and you set the parameters around specifically those projects, and you wait to issue the debt until you actually have bids in hand, then you can ensure that you don't borrow more money than you need, and possibly reduce the tax rate impact, and also don't create an unsustainable, or unsustainable funding structure going into the future for the schools. Go ahead.
And let me just make sure, because I heard you say something even about by cluster. If, if one of, if we're going to sort them out to specifically as, you know, bond election for elementary school, whatever, yes or no? Do you set up a situation where one area of the county with a lot of voters may vote for it, and everybody else votes against it?
You could, and I think it's really hard to kind of narrow it down until you have their CCEP and plan, and plan in hand, to kind of see how it shakes out. Because the process will be, Dr. Webb and his group right now are putting dollars to those projects. The school board will look at it, and then it'll be forwarded on to the working group. And when it's forwarded on to the working group, we'll also get a copy of it. And we'll sit down with school staff and go through the project line by, projects line by line, and say, "This is bond fundable, this is not, this is bond fundable, this is not." And then, once we have that list, separate list of, "Here's bond fundable projects", then we'll look for some kind of logical way to group those together. After this year, assuming the legislation holds out through the, runs its course and kind of expires, you have the ability then to appropriate that money to the, to the degree you want to, as a project. So, I think, once we have that detailed information in hand, I can give you a better sense about the best way to do it. And maybe by school, maybe by cluster, maybe by type. You know, you may want to do all roofing projects, you may want to do ADA projects, you may want to add auxiliary gems, and have a package of six auxiliary gems across the system. It's just really hard to tell.
I'm not saying I disagree with you, but I could see a nightmare ballot, a sample ballot, what that would look like. And I'm thinking, if we're going to be asking that many questions, you know, maybe we should, you know, the first election that's counting wide would be the presidential primary election, right?
Yeah.
So, there'll only be one question on that ballot. And this makes me think about, you know, if we're going to do a long ballot with different measures and bond measures, maybe we might need to get it sped up, so we're doing it during that election.
Well, I think, you know, I think there's pros and cons, and far better minds than mine determine which is appropriate ballot. But I think you have a valid point. And I think deciding, I think it's a partnership with the schools also, to determine what's a workable ballot for them, and what the parameters around the projects are going to be. Because I can tell you, just our normal push-pull with the schools that we have is, they're going to want as wide open as possible, and we're going to want as narrow as possible. The answer is, as always, is price somewhere in the middle. So, I, like I said, I don't have a real good handle on how that would work out until, I see some dollar amounts, and then, once we start to see how that plays out, I think we can give you some better advice. Make sure.
I have a couple of questions. One, when you put on a bond, is that an up-to amount? Let's say libraries, let's talk libraries, up to $13 million. Is that up to? Now, I also heard you say, secondly, I heard you say that even though you don't have a bid, you're going to go ahead and start taxing.
And that's a reason for that.
And I see a concern in that, whether you're talking libraries, or schools, or whatever. That entity is going to say, "That's my money. And if you come in 10 million instead of 13, we're going to have a fight on our hands." And if, you know, if it's in schools, that they're accustomed to using the bond savings for other entities. And we, we need to be clear about this.
Sure. And the reason why I recommend a debt sinking fund is, if you remember back to our conversations about the 45.5 and the tax rate, and we knew you had two years, and we had to pay that out, and we said, "Okay, over two years, what does the tax rate have to be so we don't have two changes in the tax rate, we only have the one?" It allows you to cut the peak off of your tax rate. So, you have, over a couple of years, you can have a flat rate. It allows you to build a little balance up before you actually have to start making that payment, so that you can lower the initial tax rate. Because, like I said, in North Carolina, the highest year you have a debt service is the very first year. So, trying to mitigate the first couple of years, because they're, they are the absolute highest, using a debt sinking fund allows you to do that. Now, my understanding of bond, the bond election is that that's a cap, not a max. I would say, it's a cap on what you can spend, it's not what you have to spend. Okay? So, if you tell the bond, if you tell the, on the referendum, you say, "It's $13 million for a library", and it comes in at 10, and you as a commission have the complete authority to not issue 13 million, you can issue 10. You have discretion, but you can't go over the 13.
But we're taxing it for 13.
Well, and that's why we'll have, by the time we get to doing the debt sinking fund, we'll have a better handle on what those actual project costs are. And just because they authorize it in an even number of year, doesn't mean I go out to the market and borrow it. I could take me four or five years to borrow all the money authorized in that bond election, because that's how long it can take to get through those projects. Dr. Webb tells me a high school's like three years. And if you're building a new library, think about our human services building, kind of how long is, we're going through that process. A new library is probably a two-year process. What, if you don't have a site for it, and you don't have the, you know, all the design, and the public input, and all that other stuff that goes with that. So, we would work out a funding schedule with our FA, and projecting out what we think that debt's going to be. And then, if you got to the point where we got out and issued debt, and let's say we estimated 5% as a bond rate, and it comes in at 4, well, the next year, because you're using a sinking fund, you can reduce the tax rate to the next, to another tier, or to another level, and, and take advantage of your built balance and kind of burn it down over time. So, it allows you to have, once you start that process, you can almost there step down your debt versus keeping it at that level. Or you as a commission, you can decide to keep it at that level, and use that money for operations, or use it for eventual replacement. There's a lot of decision points after that. So, but, we haven't historically here done the debt sinking fund approach. That money was either put into operations, taken out of operations to make it work. But the debt sinking fund, and to me, you put around the tax bill, 2016 GEO bond, and here's your tax rate you're paying for that, that referendum decision. Because it shouldn't be intermingled with operations. Kind of gives the wrong picture if we went up 10 cents. Say you did 200 million, you went up 10 cents, and makes it look like we, county operations by $200 million are, are the cost of 20 million, which in fact you didn't. But, it allows you then the most flexibility if you use that debt sinking fund approach, and keeps the project money on what was approved by the voters specifically. So, and that's why the ballot language is, talks about the item, the dollar value, and the, and the necessary tax rate. It doesn't tell what the tax rate would be, it says the necessary tax rate to fund that debt service. So, to kind of answer your question.
I, I understand what you're saying. My concern is that we did 15.1% last, last year, and there's a lot of people hurting. So, I'm very cautious about committing to any kind of tax increase, whether it's bond-related or whatever.
Agreed. And you would only want to put that tax increase on after the referendum. You wouldn't put it on until after the referendum. So, once you, let's say you go out in February, you have it in hand, and we think we actually might issue, might issue that first round in the fall, then we'd go ahead and put it on, and allow that to start. So, if there's, it's a timing, you know?
I understand the concept.
It's, conceptually, though, the idea is that you want to start a little ahead of your debt service, so that you can lower your initial tax rate as much as possible, versus taking, you know, the highest rate and building balance. The idea is to smooth it out as much as possible.
But, but we need to assume that whatever bonds are on the ballot, all of them will be approved at the full tax rate that we anticipate. But that's the assumption that everyone should use.
That's right, because that's kind of a max. Now, we could be wrong when we do our projection, because we will project out over time, growth in the number of issues.
But it should be down.
It should be down, not up.
So, if I understand, I think what Mr. Hamel was saying is, we're looking at, we set the tax rate to 15% higher last year. So, are we talking about adding this on top of the existing tax rate? Or are we talking about setting the tax rate back to 66 cents? Then whatever's bond rate is approved, we increase taxes.
Well, he said earlier that the 19 and a half that we're talking about is where that was built, to do that raise. So, how are you going to reduce it?
How are you going to reduce taxes?
Reduce it back to 66. I mean, I don't think that's, I don't.
Well, because there's no, there's no requirement to give the schools that amount of money.
Well, I think you have to look at it in two buckets. Okay? The, the CCEP is probably going to be just north of $200 million, if I had to guess. And that's all the indications we, we're hearing. Again, I have no insider knowledge on what that's going to be, because I don't think they're finished yet. Of that $200 million, there's two pieces. There's going to be a bucket of things, or ongoing maintenance, or emerging maintenance issues, which could be $100 million, and then real bond fundable projects, which could be $100 million. You can't, if you don't do A, and only do B, you ignore the whole list of maintenance issues. If you only do maintenance issues and don't do expansion, then you ignore the whole list of expansion. So, my recommendation, and this is me speaking, is that you look at that ongoing funding, the 19 and a half million, as what it's costs our school system to maintain the facilities that it operates. And if you think about it this way, they're a $350 million operation. That is less than 10% of their, what would be their total operating cost, going toward ongoing maintenance of their facilities, that are high-use facilities. So, I don't think at 19 and a half, that's an extreme amount of funding given their size. It's a little jarring, because we haven't funded it before, but I don't think it's an inappropriate level of funding. When I look at the list of things of that 19.5 funds, and over five, six, seven years, what it's going to take to kind of, on their list, their CCEP plan, at 20 million a year, to kind of achieve that, I think you're giving them the maintenance of the money they need over that time. I think the issue we had is that the school system grew so fast, so quickly, so big so quickly, that the sustainable maintenance model was never really put into play. So, now you're running into things with lockers, ceiling tiles, plumbing issues, 88 places, flooring. None of those things are really bond fundable.
Well, and I certainly, I certainly agree with what you're saying. I guess my concern is, you know, since we put this tax increase in place, we have heard multitudes of citizens of this county who can't afford it. And now, we're talking about putting something on top of that.
Well, I think that's the question at the, at the ballot box. That's the, the concept of the referendum, and why the framers of the Constitution of Carolina thought it's so important for that exact issue. Because it's such a large commitment, it can have such a material impact on the, on the taxpayers' daily life. They get a direct democracy approach to that.
I get that. But the voters didn't have the decision last year when we voted to increase the tax rate. Now, some might say, "Well, they approved it in 2000 and whatever year that was, but it never got ever left."
At some, at some point, tax increases due to bond funding are going to become punitive, resulting in becoming harder and harder to bring in the commercial development that this county needs. And I think that's going to be, as we whittle these projects down, trying to figure out, when is it punitive? Some would say 66 was punitive, 77's definitely, it, it depends on the train of thought. But that's my concern, is at what point, instead of being able to attract new businesses, do we start losing businesses?
Sure. And I think that that's, you know, kind of going back to that very first, why I think that that's so important. Because this is the issue that you have to wrestle with as the commission, and why we were having the conversation now in March, talking about next February as the first possible date, is because this is not a simple project, and these are not simple decisions. These are very tough decisions that you as a commission have to make. And I think that that's the key, is understanding how it impacts the taxpayer, how it meets the needs of the, of the residents. Because, you know, depending upon the project, and the individual project, that may or may not, in your mind, be something that is necessary or essential to the operations of government. And depending upon your, you know, your philosophical bent, and everybody has their own version of that, that slate of projects kind of will change. And that's why, you know, I think vetting those projects out, being good project estimates, understanding the operating budget impact, what the possible tax ramifications are of all those. That's why I had to go four months into that process, for that discussion alone. Because once, the administration having to get into the ballot box, as Jeff was saying, not hard, it's just complicated. It's got steps. But that's not the hard part. Deciding on the slate of the projects, the appropriate internal controls, Commissioner Rushon talking about how you frame those ballot questions, to ensure that we don't go, even if the voter passes it, you know, at a certain level, that we don't go beyond that, to, you know, keep that as, as small as possible for the taxpayers' impact.
Well, that's, that's what I'm, I guess I'm most fearful of, is, you know, if we're just, if we're going to put this out to the voter, and they approve it, you're going to put that on top of an already struggling constituency that...
That's your, your policy at this point?
I don't know, I understand.
I mean, the other option.
I'm not arguing with the policy, I'm just, I think there's got to be some level of caution. Well, and I don't think we need to be in a situation where we cut services.
Well, but I think it's part of the vetting process, and I'm going to kind of approach it from a little bit of different direction than, than Jeff has, is, as you know, the, the money's allocated for capital improvement programs right now for the schools is based upon three or four studies that they have done over multiple years. Supposedly, by doing this CCEP, that wipes the slate clean, and gives you their next six to 10 years. and gives you their next six to 10 years, six to seven year horizon of what are their capital needs. Now, as Jeff has indicated, some are capital, some are probably going to be operating. We don't think that they will all qualify for capital since we have a little bit different definition than they do as to how they use capital in operating or current expense. So you may find yourself as to that, within though, that tax rate that is already established, some of those projects, you may be seeing some of those projects on what we saw in their original CIP submittal and what you see in the CCEP. Is that a fair statement?
It is, and that's why you kind of have to marry them and look at it and say, okay, as you go through it, and that's why I'd say it's going to be, it's a lengthy process to kind of go through because I think the CCEP is 100 plus pages long. And say, this project is something you should, can't use, wouldn't be appropriate for bond election, this is. And those things that go out to bond election are you approve, because ultimately you, as the commission, have the final decision on what goes on the referendum.
What's the assumed cost of the CCEP? What do those projects have cost?
We think in the neighborhood of 200 million, but that is just a guess that, we have not had a validation of that number, but we think it could be in that neighborhood.
It'd be 100, swing either way on that.
Are we rebuilding 52 schools?
They are, the approach that they are taking just based on preliminary look at it is not to rebuild the schools, but have significant additions and changes to the majority of their schools. The concept is that it's a construction, community construction equity plan. So their basis for their, part of the basis for their work is some equity throughout the system as far as facilities. And they're also, by understanding, as what I've heard, their stated goal is to eliminate the use of all portable facilities. So that's where, and that's why I think the work of the working group and staff, once we get that CCEP in some format, we can deal with it with dollars. We're a ways away from the school package at this point.
So the school hasn't assigned dollar values to any of these projects?
They have not. We have their preliminary list, they've ranked the projects, and just, Dr. Webb's kind of like me, he's like, I want to know which of these.
Right, I understand, but there's no sense of going out and bidding all these projects.
We have to do.
I mean, I get that.
And then, keep in mind, your next step is that that CCEP is going to get submitted to the joint working group. And that joint working group will go through that and come up with a recommendation to you as a commission and to the school board. Then you as a commission, once that recommendation is made to you, it's not binding. You can go through that recommendation and say yes or no to those projects. So it's really on the school stuff, and I completely hear your concern. At this point, I don't have enough information to kind of tell you yes or no, one way or the other. I do know though, having reviewed with Dr. Webb quite a bit and kind of looking at kind of over the last couple of years what they've submitted and their multiple plans and those different things, having sat through nine weeks in court, that probably 19 and a half, 20 million dollars is an unreasonable number for ongoing maintenance of their facilities.
Can the bonds be structured? I'm sorry, can the bonds be structured to where the, as you retire the debt, it cannot be rolled back into that two-thirds program? So that actually is retired?
You as a commission are the only ones that can authorize that two-thirds. So as long as you as a commission say no on the two-thirds, I can't go use it with my own permission.
But there's nothing we can do to prevent a future board from doing that?
No, sir, and it only comes available every year. You have to maximize it because you netted against what you issued new. So you have to maximize it by doing it every other year. And right now I can tell you, two-thirds debt really is only about 16 million dollars for this year.
Aren't you really taking the voter out of the equation by reissuing that debt?
On two-thirds debt, yes. And that's the one caveat, the two-thirds debt is, it's wide open. Whereas you said originally you're going to build a library. Once you go to the two-thirds debt side of the house, you said, we built the library, we're going to recycle that authority and we can build whatever we want.
If we hadn't done that in the past, where would we be now? Any idea?
Have we done that in the past?
Not, I can remember. I think they chose some alternative issuance tools, using security. You can also issue, for instance, what you, certainly against participation, which aren't really as popular anymore, where you can secure the debt using the facility. So we have some schools out there that are actually security against debt, and those are the ones we still keep on our books. All the other GO bonds, when the facilities went over to the schools, we kept the debt. That's why if you look at our balance sheet, we have this huge negative number, because we have all the debt and none of the assets that go with it.
Can the board have a policy that we don't use two-thirds debt?
You can absolutely have a policy, just keep in mind that three of you want to.
Well, I have a future policy, but you know.
If you would like us to draft one or put it in your budget ordinance that way, we can absolutely put one together for you.
On the bond referendums, we do a description of what it is. Including that description, would it be the actual cost of the approval, like one cent, two cent, three cent on the tax rate, whatever it'll be?
It actually says, if I remember right, that the language is the necessary tax rate to fund the debt service and interest of that. It doesn't, I don't think you can actually write the, I don't think you can actually put in there. They have a language for bond councils.
For example, the effect on, yes vote on this bond would be a two-cent tax increase?
You do that in your educational, which you don't put it on the ground.
They saw in our bond councils, and this was last year about this time, here's the wording that they were recommending, is, shall the order authorizing blank bonds plus interest for, briefly state the purpose, and providing that additional taxes may be levied in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds be approved? And there's a yes or no. So what you would do is you would insert the dollar value and insert a brief project description. So when we look at our projects, for instance, Southwest Union Library would be a project if you decided, does that kind of make sense?
So we'll put, the value will be there, but only in the information, not on the ballot, but in the information provided would have the tax implications.
Right, and then of course that changes every year. As Jeff said, this is a full faith and credit in the county. You are binding yourselves to raise taxes should there be a necessary payoff for those chipmunks.
The voter themselves in the booth won't see that.
Not in the booth, but all the materials.
But do not? It doesn't say on the ballot that your, this vote will require an increase in your taxes by 2% or no?
Okay, now to the statute of law, language control of bond reform, I would guess that's probably written from the statute.
Probably written by Democrat.
Okay, so these are, when we went back, the way we put together. Sorry, I just got to move on.
Probably this as well.
I want to be real clear. These aren't projects recommended by staff. We went back and looked over a number of years for projects that were kind of talked about, been on the slate before the economic recession, requests from departments, these different, we kind of looked all over, high and low for projects to kind of give you, here's a handful of projects that you may want to consider. This is not all-inclusive, and you absolutely can tell us you want to do something else or something that's not on here, and we will run that down. So this is just a starting place for the discussion. So these are the possible county bond election projects. Replacement and expansion of the jail sheriff's office. I meant to call today to get the jail number today. Last, as Cindy and I talked about, the last number is about 215 in population capacity, somewhere around 250. What the sheriff would tell you is that his biggest issue really is his office space. He's grown about 17, 20% over the last five, six, seven years. So they're really out of space to put people. So what he really needs is the last part, the sheriff's office. We've had a lot of success with our alternative programs, adding prosecutors, processing cases faster, because as you know, in our jail, we don't house inmates per se. It's pre-trial, a lot of pre-trial folks. So once they're actually are decided guilty or not guilty, they go to the state prison for the most part. So I think our longest tenure prisoner is like four years, or at least it was last year.
Four years?
Yeah, I think he's waiting, I remember like a murder trial or something.
Did you ever hike to a speedy trial?
Well, depends. Emergency management facility, we recently renovated, and I say recently, the last three, four years, renovated downstairs for the 911 center. This would include 911 and the rest of the emergency management folks to move them out and get them some more space. They are absolutely crammed into their facility downstairs at this point. And that's ever-changing, more technology, putting more stuff around constantly and so forth. The 4H pavilion, this was the original concept, I believe, from 2008, '09 timeframe. There's actually some work going on with the ag advisory board to refine that and give us a better project scope. And I didn't put any dollar values with these, because the truth is, I don't have a good handle on what any of these costs at this point, but knowing what you want to do, we will spend the time to refine these. Kank Creek Park improvements, this includes concessions. I believe a nature center, running some utilities to different campsites, new camp store, a welcome hut. Various, I can tell you, this is probably the lowest cost of all of these projects, but various park improvements. Historic courthouse renovations, this is really a good one for the poster top, where we're not really sure, because we're not sure as you as a commissioner, how you want to use that facility. It's one thing if you want to renovate it to rent, lease out the spaces, class A office or class B office space for attorneys. It's another if you want to turn it into a museum or an educational facility, or if you just want to keep the envelope secure, which is kind of what we're doing now, keep it from leaking and falling down on itself. That probably doesn't have to be a bond election. We've got money set aside for that as it is. So really deciding what you want to do with that historic attribute of the community. Jesse Helm's park development, this has been an ongoing project, and this is phases two and three, which would complete the tie-in, the walking trails, pavilions, all those other components. And there's, in your information, there's much better descriptions of these projects. Parkland banking, this would be for banking, actually purchasing land for future park needs in the county as the county continues to grow based on the recreation master plan. I believe what you would see is possible demand or changing demand for parkland, and as the land gets developed, that land becomes more scarce. So this would be a program to actually purchase land and set it aside for future park and park use. Southwest Union Library, this would be somewhere probably between Weddington and Waxaw in that area. And this would be for, I believe it was about 18,000 square foot facility is what they were originally visioning.
I hope it's bigger than that.
And maybe, maybe this was 35.
I think it was.
I think this was 35, the expansion's 18.
25, 30. What's that, about here?
And the thing that I, that I kind of, as we explored the two library projects is, and Marty may disagree with me, so in full disclosure, your librarians probably can see it differently than I do, is the service delivery model for library and library services, I believe is changing to a large degree. And in our community, we don't have a lot of community centers, so we do a lot of community events out of our libraries. So the nature of the space is changing. So when we, if you were to do the Southwest Union Library and do a new library, I think some work has to be done, because this is probably a 2008 project at least, going back that far, is, you know, now, seven years later, what's our conception of a library and how it relates to the community and how we use it? Is it more computer space, less stacks? Is it, you know, community room, bare community room, classroom space? Because I tell you right now, they offer a lot of classes at our library down here in Monroe. And the Indian Trail Library, which is the West, Union West Regional, is the most heavily used in the system, and it's used for a whole lot of different things, not people going in borrowing books all the time. And with the expansion of eBooks, in fact, I was reviewing a bunch of requests today and the discussion about adding eBooks, you know, that's not a brick and mortar issue. That's a capacity issue of licensing. So you could add 100,000 eBooks and never have to build another square foot of space in a building. So there's a lot of discussion, I think, around these two projects. Southwest Union, particularly where it's going to be, where you're going to sign it if you want to do it, get on own property for it. And this expansion of Union West, because it's landlocked, and you would actually have to purchase some land around it to do it, and how that impacts the community and kind of what that expansion looks like. So I think there, like I said, of these projects, these all have a lot of vetting around them as to kind of taking, these are concepts for the most part, and refining those and kind of updating them, because like I said, some of these are in 2008, 2006, '07 timeframe. So how we deliver the services at that time, very different than how we deliver services today. So part of that process then is developing, once you, if you were to narrow that list for us, allow us to kind of give you some preliminary project estimates and even talk through some of those issues about how that project's scope and is going to occur in the program planning. SBCC, and this is based on last year's, we received their request. I failed to communicate correctly to Dr. Seagull or his staff, but then their request was going to be due. So we did use last year's request, and I don't believe any of them changed with the exception of an addition of a property acquisition for land adjacent to the existing SBCC campus. So you have a multipurpose building, which I believe you all saw last year. The Center for Technology and Allied Health, this is the Beeler Building. That's going, that would complete that project. Buildings A and B, which are their two existing facilities, and require, and would allow for renovation and maximization of that space, and then a new classroom facility to expand. And this would effectively eliminate the use of portals on their site as well. And again, these, we have, Union County Public Schools has, I think right around 300, 320 students right now, but a capacity of about 400 seats in the early college program that are there. So some of these facilities are used by our public school students.
And does that funding then transfer over to SBCC?
Per student funding, unless you guys have changed from last year, you don't get any funding for those students, right?
We're receiving FDE reimbursement from the state.
From the state.
From the state, or the local funds or the county funds.
But none of the local funds, right? Dr. Sutter, did I get, are there any that I'm missing?
Yes.
Thank you. So, you know, as you kind of think through the projects that they have, if you remember, we did a welding lab, that's where the welding lab at the Beeler Building and so forth. And these are all significant projects to add capacity for SBCC. But we think they belong on their own slate. They're not general county projects, they're projects for the school, for SBCC. And then of course you have the UCPS. We talked a lot about these. I do want to mention one thing. The P, what we refer to as a P3, a public-private partnership. There's been a lot of comment and a lot of discussion about this being kind of a silver bullet, if you will, to allow for low costs to government to build things. In my career, and I've been doing this for a little while, not as long as some, but more than most, and P3s generally only work with significant infrastructure projects. Tollways, water systems a lot of times, maybe. And the reason why they are not typically fruitful for the government is because when you do a partnership with an economic development firm or someone like that, you have two factors that are really working against you. Is they have to have a return on investment. Government typically doesn't take a return on investment. And their cost of borrowing is going to be materially more expensive, particularly for a bread and butter project, such as a school building, a library, those things, because we're tax exempt. They can't borrow at tax-exempt rates. So where we borrow at 3, 3.5%, 4%, that private firm or that construction company is probably paying in the 6, 7, 8% range, and probably on a 10-year payback, not a 20-year debt. So just those two fundamental issues have caused the LGC in North Carolina to really frown upon the concept of public-private partnerships. And because it really becomes debt, because you'll enter into a long-term lease, the LGC will have to approve your lease or the lease of that facility, because it goes on your books as a debt. So conceptually, P3s really sound like a great idea. In practice, the reason why they're not really widely used is because it takes a very specific fact, set of facts around a project, and it's typically not a bread and butter project. It's more of a, it's more of a one-off economic development project or something like that to make them successful, okay? The other piece, which I'm always weary of, is that if you let a builder who builds a normal office building build your school or build your library, you're going to get a 15 to 20-year product. Whereas we want our buildings, like in the human service building, we want it to be a 40 to 60-year building, okay? And I always talk about 20 years planned for significant renovation, but not replacement. You may have to move the walls around to accommodate for changes in how the world operates and technology, but you don't ever want to have to tear down a building and restart it after 20 years. And if you look around a lot of office buildings, you know, depending upon the quality of the construction, you're not getting that same. What you would get if you did it, if we did it ourselves versus relying on a developer. So I just want to kind of mention that. I'm sure we'll have more conversations about that later. And then again, a quick update on the joint working group. I believe we have a meeting on about the 18th to kind of go through the CCEP. And this, I've done versions of this kind of presentation with them, with different parts of it. So there, hopefully, you can remember some of those as we kind of go forward in that discussion. So, now, the fun part. I'm going to look back to you, first, if you have any questions. Second, is the process we laid out for you, kind of what you want it to be? And then third, which projects and you have, for a day you want to aim for? And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the chairman or whoever wants to moderate to kind of give us some direction because. This is, as far as we can take it as staff, we need you to tell us.
I think, I think your timing is horrible. And just talking about bond, bond elections. I, I understand schools, community colleges, things, but from the county's standpoint. Fifteen percent was pretty heavy last year. And I, I, a lot of the projects I'd love to see, I'd love to see them four H pavilion. But timing is bad. And if you ask which ones I want to support for a bond referendum, I personally can tell you I can't support either one right now. Because we don't know what revale is going to do. And we very well may have to increase taxes just a revenue neutral. Is that a fair statement?
That's probably a factual statement.
Okay.
But that's my concern as well, the county hasn't come out of a downturn yet. And to go back and issue more debt and more taxes. As we're just coming out of that, that long downturn, I, I think is detrimental to the county long-term.
Any other comments?
Wait, no. I was just going to say, that's all around good. And I think.
Alex, you don't want to tell your next student?
Not at all. Other than somebody needs to be called.
Made the point about, we, we, we find ourselves in a rock and hard place. From the standpoint of, we've had the issue with sales tax and the people that develop, we're a bedroom community and they work in Charlotte, spend their money in Charlotte. Some of you may have seen the Wenge study, we, we, we could, we could start building commercial development tomorrow. Business and industry tomorrow, and it'd take us a long time to catch up. But at what point in time, does that impact our quality of place, I call it? Where people want to come here, want to educate their kids here, want to live and work here. And with that comes services, amenities, quality schools. So you can't, don't get me wrong, because, trust me, I've had enough where you folk raised my hand to vote for a fifteen percent tax increase. But you cannot stick your head in the sand and deny one, one of those projects up there, the nine-one-one center. That's what I believe is, is the primary role of government, is public safety, and it's first and foremost. And that's been put off and put off and put off in growing counties. It was just like health and human service, put off, put off, put off, until you finally have to make a decision, so. It's going to be gut-wrenching, but to say, just turn a blind eye to all of it and say, not now, not sure we can do that.
Go ahead. To me, the difference is, if you look at everything on here, potentially you would be looking at two hundred and fifty to three hundred million, which.
You said five, five seven hundred, is that it?
Four to five.
Four to five seven hundred?
So if our tax rate goes to ninety-plus cents, and then you add back in the municipal tax rates. It, it becomes very punitive to the taxpayer. While some of these may be able to do for, what do you think, a couple, three, ten, fifteen million combined?
All of, all of those.
No, no, there's, there's a few of them that you could do as a group and have it less than twenty million.
You could probably be less than twenty million with a handful of them.
It, it's, when you get above fifty to a hundred million, I, I think it's going to be problematic.
Yes, sir.
One thing I think, this kind of requires a lot of thinking outside the box. And thinking of bringing services in, in different ways, and I like what you said about the ebooks. That's a creative solution to, to a problem. You know, when I look at this list, there, there are a few things like expansion of sheriff's office spaces. Well, I've been in Waxahaw's wonderful police station and they've got excess space there, maybe we could work out something with them. To partner in and have a sheriff's substation, for example. They have office space available and we, and Sheriff Need's Office, it would be a good partnership. And it would serve the taxpayers that are paying county and city taxes in Waxahaw. Emergency management facility, again, I, you know, we, we've expanded to Cabarrus County for, for emergencies. And in case we have something happen here, you know, again, find some, something creative, get creative with that. Four H pavilion is really one that we, if we were going to put on a bond election, I would see it going on a bond election. Because if you're looking at maybe a six million or less, it's the impact that it would have, you know, if the citizens supported it. You know, that would be something I would see that if we're going to do it, that would also add to the park there, add a facility to the park. Can Creek Park improvements, how many of our citizens use Can Creek Park would be a question, and, and do we need to do those improvements? You know, if it's user pay or is it, is it going to be something that we just do to, to improve it? The historic courthouse renovations, we can't let it fall down on itself, but at the same time, we, we have money that's keeping, keeping the lights on and the heat going and the cool in the summertime. We need to find some use for that with some of our, probably some of our county employees to make double use of it. I don't think it's up to date to do a, do an emergency management facility, but. We can, we can get creative there. Jesse Helms Park Development, again, the use of the park, how much use and if we could, if we could pile that in with the four H pavilion, doing something altogether there. The parkland banking, there's a lot of opportunities for new developments and new facilities, especially with our U D O coming up. To be able to, to have parkland and, and to be able to find land for walking trails, things like that, that are already built in as amenities to a lot of places. The libraries, again, you know, you come up with a, one, one solution. You know, one thing that I'm researching now and I've talked to you about, and hopefully we can get more information on in the future, would be the. If we can keep this special assessment authority. And, and if we have a special assessment authority, maybe we can use that to build some of these projects, so. And it could be done by developers, for example, you were talking about the three, P three. Where that might not be sustainable, if that developer added value to his property. He could, he could ask for the, for the special assessment authority probably, and we'll, again, find out more about that. So, so, it's going to challenge us, but you guys and the people in this county. We've, we've got smart people in this county and we can address these things, maybe without having to overburden ourselves with debt. You know, we don't have to do every one of these things in the way that it's presented, but we can be creative and, and come up with solutions to the each one of these issues. And I think that's going to be our challenge more than, you know, thinking outside the box. So, so if we're going to put a bond issue on four H pavilion. And maybe couple it with Jesse Helms Park development, because it would all be there together?
I would want to see the usage, because I don't think Jesse Helms has been used to the extent that it was anticipated it would be used. And, and I don't know that it would pass a bond referendum.
And keep it in mind, the park is not, and it's, the soccer fields are there, the bridges are underway, are getting ready to be done. So the facilitation to use, if you don't get to it, use the playground, hasn't really been as open to the public. So you're using, it would be hard to get usage, because not, the whole park's not open, because it's never completed. This would be the second, third phases to actually complete that park and use it.
Yeah, and they're working on a couple of things, I think, with Wenge University to get some additional use out of it, which hopefully will continue.
I think the pavilion would, would provide even some economic development opportunities there. And again, like I said, I don't know that it would pass or not, I mean, it's going to definitely get an increase, but. You, you're looking at a, you know, maybe four or five million dollars, I've heard different figures on it, anywhere from three to six million. You know, again, the people would decide whether or not they thought it would go, and then we could go with what the people say. But there's other, you know, even the libraries. I don't know that, I don't know how they would fare in a bond referendum, because you would have a, you know, would anybody from New Salem vote to put a library in Waxahaw or Weddington? So it'd be, it would be a tough vote, and, and four H pavilion would be a tough vote, and so would expansion of the Union West Regional Library, or I mean, doing a South Asian library.
I just, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just want to clarify the process today. This is to give us, as, before staff goes out and does any more work. Once, if we get any kind of consensus today, and the consensus may be nada. But if we get a consensus on any projects today, what we will do is we will go out and we will do all the research and bring it back. At that point in time, you still have the ability to say, don't like it, don't like the cost, don't like the usage, don't like the return that it gives to us, it's off the shelf. And so, but before we go and do a lot of work on all of these, because we don't have endless resources. We were just trying to get a sense for those that the board may want to pursue before we spend any more staff time on them.
It's not a final decision.
No.
But I can tell you to vet not all nine of these.
There's, I don't, we don't think we can do it.
We don't have the resources to do it.
Do you, do you want to vote, go down and vote each one?
Have we discussed with Mr. Patel, what his insight as far as, what he'd bring as far as economic development, how that fits into their thought process?
Well, no, I have not. But I will, I will, I came from a community that probably thirty years ago looked just like Union County. Just a little bit, half our size. And they, they were a bedroom community to Orlando. Their first stab at economic development was a triple A building, which sat there for the first ten years all by itself. You look at it today, their tax base is probably sixty-five, thirty-five. They have been very successful. They have trails, they have parks, they have libraries, they have blue ways. Because they bought into quality of place, as, as Commissioner Simpson was talking about. That they knew they had to have the full gamut in order to attract businesses.
Right. Now, I think that's my biggest concern is, you know, we look, we talk about economic development that we're blue in the face. But when it comes right down to it, we don't do a darn thing to really try to attract business. I mean, I don't know how many times we heard in that nine-week trial, how Union County Public Schools is the only reason that people moved to Union County. Well, I hate to tell you, but I didn't move to Union County for Union County Public Schools, I don't have a child in school. But I still chose to move here, and there's a lot of other people in the same situation. What I do miss is the quality of life that I see my coworkers have to go outside of the county. To go entertain their families and things like that. I think that personally is where we're missing the boat. I think if we devoted our time to things like finishing up Jesse Helms Park and making it usable, the four H pavilion. Great opportunity to expand a program that has already proven to be very successful in the county. Emergency management facility, I think, we heard, we talked about, you know, we're a growing county. And they're in cramped quarters and conditions downstairs. I don't know where y'all look around, but we're still building in Union County, and growth is coming back, and it's going to come back. And we have got to take, in my opinion, the steps to prepare for this. I agree with Commissioner Helms, the timing stinks. But that's not staff situation, and that's not our situation, that is just the, the cards that we're dealt and the time that we're, we're living in. Personally, I think the historic courthouse renovation. I think it's a great opportunity to explore, to see if that facility can be made into rentable spaces. I think it's a great way to generate revenue. I think it's an opportunity to utilize an existing structure that right now we're pouring money into. And God knows, I'm a history bust, so I don't want anything to happen to it. But if we can do something to lease that space out to attorneys or, you know. I'm assuming it would be something along the lines of, of court-related occupation that would go in there. But I see that as, as a revenue generator.
I would, I would support a leased space for the courthouse, not a museum.
Oh, I agree, I mean, I think, in my opinion, you maintain the most historical significant structures, the old courtroom and the things of that nature. But I think, you know, we have a lot of space in there that could be used for attorneys or paralegals or title companies or, you know, the, the opportunities there are endless, in my opinion. But I still think you have to maintain the historical value of the courtroom and, and things like that, but I agree.
And you just cover your costs.
Right, at least break even. You know, I, I don't know if that's possible, but I think, to me, that's something that's worth exploring. Yeah. I agree with, with what you spoke of and, and my initial thought on a library, you know. I don't go to libraries anymore. You know, I go online, I check out my books online. Exactly. But you know, just a, just a thought, but I just found where Waxahaw's looking at bringing in the YWCA. Why don't we look at partnering with the YWCA to add a community room on there? You know, to Commissioner Rushing's point, let's do look outside the box and see if there's some partnerships that can be created to meet some of these needs of our citizens. Without going into more debt and carrying it solely on the backs of the taxpayer. Parkland banking, again, I think we need to look for our developers and those folks, you know, there needs to be some green space donated. There needs to be development around that is going to keep people in our community versus sending people elsewhere. I personally think we need to explore a county-run athletic system. You know, the county I came from had a tremendous athletic program. They maintained their parks through the costs associated with maintaining that, so I mean, it was, it was a profit maker for the county. So, you know, I think, back to Commissioner Rushing's point, we look outside the box, we find ways that, and we can turn these to our benefit. But we're going to have to do something besides just say, we're going to fix up Jesse Helms Park. We've got to have the forethought to say, here's why we're going to fix up Jesse Helms Park. There needs to be that next step. What are we going to do with Jesse Helms Park? What are we going to do with Can Creek Park? You know, I've been to Can Creek Park plenty of times and I think it's a wonderful facility. But I don't, when I look around, I don't see a whole lot of use. And when I talk to people in the county and I say, oh, if you've been out to Can Creek Park, they're like, well, I've never heard of it. So if we're going to spend more money on Can Creek Park, we're going to have to do something to make Can Creek Park more attractive. Whether that's a marketing blitz to get the word out there. But to me, Can Creek Park's the hidden jewel in Union County. I mean, these folks go up to the mountains and things because they don't think we got any campground's right here. Well, look at your backyard, it's right there, but we don't, we don't tell people that. And, you know, I, I think we do a fair job, a lot of it, people just don't pay attention, but.
That's part of the long-term comprehensive plan that the Park Interchange Committee is working on now. Is to develop a database so that people become more familiar with what's out there in the county.
Right, then I think to that point, maybe that's something we look at. If we're going to, if we're with the comprehensive land use plan or the comprehensive park use plan, you know, maybe we need to look at some of these parks. And what are our long-term plans for those parks? So, you know, to me, libraries are off the table, parkland banking is off the table. I'd say Jesse Helms Park, the historic courthouse, Can Creek, four H pavilion, and emergency management. So I'd say one, the middle, one, two, three, four, five, the middle five, in my opinion, is.
So let me see if I can encapsulate.
Go ahead, that was long-winded, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So there's only two, you, you got two groups of projects going on that you kind of, you're talking about. You have the projects you want to do, but you're not willing to put out for a referendum, because you don't want to borrow additional money, you want us to find possibly other ways to do those types of projects. Then there is a set, depending upon where you are in the room, of five, two to five projects. That you would consider that those would be the ones you want to put out for a referendum. Is that, am I hearing that right?
Maybe, maybe we need like cost figures, a little bit more close to an estimate on some of these things and.
I can tell you, we can't do all of these in, in the time that we have available, we can't cost all of these out. That's why we're trying to narrow the list a little bit.
To front to point earlier, I would like to hear from Mr. Patel, see what he's hearing from the businesses that their people want to see in the communities. You know, for example, if you were to look at, I've heard on the Southwest Union Libraries, if we don't have the land. It, it's going to be cost prohibitive and probably a lot of effort to go through, because everybody wants it in a different location, we don't want the land, so it's going to be very. the land, so it's going to be very expensive. Where the expansion of the, of the Union West Regional Library, it is more of a community center. It, it is heavily used and it's going to continue to be heavily used. So, if we were going to do anything with the libraries, I would say the, the West Regional Library.
It is our business library.
Yes. And I've expanded because it is packed all the time.
And I think the, I think the only problems there would be that we may have to condemn property to expand because of the land around it. And we talked about that a little bit, you know, when we were discussing some of these earlier, that, that there may be some issues with having to purchase or even possibly condemn.
But I don't think that, I don't think there's a question of that. I don't believe anybody on this board who would vote to condemn property.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, but now...
But we may be able to find something.
There has been landing with Indian Trail where they want to expand.
Right.
There, there has been land in the past offered up for a Southwest Union Library in the area of sixteen in Newtown. I don't know if that's still available or up for grabs, but I, I think that somebody would probably love to have a library near their subdivision. And if you, maybe we worry less about whatever, but, you know, you know, sometimes you got to put it where you can get land and, and put it in that area. And I think it would actually help relieve some of the pressure on the US Library if we did have to do it. Again, thinking outside the box, I'm not, I don't know what you're saying. I know the libraries are important. And, and, you know, even using it as, as an annex for the sheriff or the, or even using it for other things that, that community centers and, and those kind of things. You know, again, thinking outside the box and getting creative and being willing to accept offers and let other people, just, just us five. I mean, everybody that's watching this has a, has a stake in this. And maybe we have a, a gentleman out there that wants to donate land for the library and just would like to name it after his kid. You know, that, that could be, that's, that's the kind of thing that it's going to take to get out of one of these issues.
Well, just, just looking at it, if you take out the top two and Southwest Union Library, you're probably looking at what, twenty-five, thirty-nine, tops?
Let's see. Say, take out the top two.
Top two, those are going to be the most expensive. And the Southwest Union Library building from scratch is going to be expensive as well.
You're probably in the twenty to thirty range?
Okay. Twenty to thirty, maybe for all those problems.
Not knowing what the courthouse would be.
Because the courthouse, the, that cost is dependent upon the use. I mean, if you were to use it as, as more of a museum, you probably have less cost than if you're having to update it for an office.
Sure.
Right.
And I would like to get a return on the courthouse.
Absolutely.
Or at least a break in there.
And the new library would create more people need than the, expanding the old library. So, there is a trade-off cost. I mean, there, there's a, you'd have to hire more people.
Some of these are going to be operation-intensive, your libraries.
Your jail.
Your jail. Even Jesse Helm's Park is going to have an operating impact because your day, your, your...
Right now, we have one person, we have one person who's assigned to, that goes by the park to, to check out the facility, but we don't have any permanent staff there.
And I think what you, you know, I think I can give you just a little bit of thought too, is when you're looking at the projects, think about what's going to give you your most bang. Because you're going to get a bite at the, the election. If you go out and you lose the election, then you're not going to be able to do that project again anytime soon. Because that's a pretty good referendum for the voters. So, you want to, it's a, it's a striking that fine line to what's going to add the most value to your community. And I'm not going to give you an opinion on which those are, but, you know, I think, but that's kind of the, you know, the wrestling match that you have is whether those, you know, I think they all have merits on some of them. But what do you think is going to have the most impact in the community for adding some value?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Would it not, would it be appropriate maybe to give you all a week or so to go and talk to the Economic Development Board and kind of get some feedback from them and maybe revisit this in maybe a week or two?
I think we should do it next week.
Is that tight? Was that, would that work for you?
And I agree, because I agree with what you were saying earlier. Some of these entities like the emergency management facility, the 4-H Pavilion and the courthouse, thinking outside the box, you know, I don't want to raise taxes. I mean, if we can do it without emergency management facility, is there a way to still house it in this facility here and not go out and build a building? So, I ask you to look at that as well. And I, you know, Jerry, I agree with you that, you know, we don't need to postpone it, but the timing is bad. And if we're talking about two years and if it fails, is there a time limit on how, how soon you can bring it back?
Well, at least two years.
At lea-, well, you know.
Until your next legislature year.
Plus, there may be a bad taste in, in the voter's mouth about it before.
Can I ask the conference question before we talk to the, the economic development folks? Are there any projects out here you don't want us to bet with them? They're just really nice services to all five concrete...
Well, define park land banking.
Literally purchasing vacant land and holding it.
No.
Okay.
At least in my opinion, that's off the table.
I, I see value to it, but I would like to see the developers donate that as part of their development. So...
I should tell you too, there's, there will be some limitations on the historic courthouse because it's a historic facility you have to get. There'll be some limitations on the choose and there'll be some limitations as to your capability of leasing it for how long based on general statute. I just throw that out there so you'll be aware of a little bit of that issue.
Can, can we move people from this building back to that? I know tax used to be in there. Some other departments used to be in there.
Depends on how much you invested. It's, it's got to be a public...
Well, and I think Jeff has a couple of points as to the, the overall, because we have to get an evidence of approval from the Historical Commission as to any renovations to that building.
Well, I mean, personally, I think if we're going to spend money on it, it ought to be a revenue generator. So, you know, whether that's a revenue generator in that moving an office out of this, you know, or a department out of this building to allow us to expand and create a new space for emergency management, that's a cost, that's a revenue generator because now we save money. But I also want us to explore, you know, if we're going to spend money on it, can we lease the space? Can we rent the space? You know, what, what are our options?
Is there, is there a list, possibly what we can use that's going before that you, you said there's limitations. Is there something you can provide us when we come back together and tell us?
No, not released to use. There are limitations as to how to renovate the building and how that, that has to proceed. And then if you do, based on the length of the lease, I mean, if you're fitting space to a particular use, it should probably be a pre-long term lease. There are ways that you have to do that as far as...
ADA.
Just one thing about disposition requirements.
But we wouldn't have to lease it from ourselves, would we?
No, if we use it.
If we use it for ourselves.
We'd use it for ours basically.
But you're not saying it can't be done. You're just saying there are limitations that...
How we do it.
We have to operate with it.
We've not looked at, you know, flexibility, but there are limitations that I want you to be aware of.
Sure.
As easy as going out and saying, okay, let's start renting to lease this space.
No, but, but I guess that's what I, where I'm coming from is I want somebody to explore that, to find out, you know, what can, can we do?
You know, that's some bad money limitations for the taxes and funding because if you use it for private business. But, okay, so...
But if not limited issues, if we used it to move existing staff...
Use it for ourselves, I think you have a little wider berth than what you would use it for. So, second group, because I don't have this, we don't have the UCPS stuff, thoughts on the SBCC facilities?
I'd like to see Dr. Sador come back and tell me what his priorities on those instead of all of them. And, and also the financial impact of...
From the operations?
Well, if you're going to build a multi-purpose building, we talked about your Center for Technology and, and that was a significant million plus, right?
Taking all those...
Working out the back, the back section of the, of the building?
Yes.
So, I think what we need to do is understand what the cost exposure, you've got to have some kind of estimate, what you're, what you're looking at. And then tell us where your priorities are, what, what gives you the most bang for the buck if we, you know, can't do all of it. Fair?
And I, I guess I'd also like to know, you know, what was the original discussion that we had on the Peeler Building? Because I, I was under the impression there was a certain amount of money that we were giving that was going to take care of everything.
We provided, the request, this was two or three years ago, the request was for seven million dollars. We provided three point five million dollars. It's my understanding that they bought, and stand corrected if I'm wrong, that they bought the building and were able to do some renovations with the three point five, I think in addition to some grants you had gotten.
And then the additional one, seven, five that we gave, was that not also for the Peeler Building?
For a welding shop.
Somewhere it was, a lot of it.
Okay. So, I guess to Commissioner Helm, what, what is the remaining cost on that? What, you know, I, I'm going to need to see some breakdowns here.
Okay.
And I think we have some costs.
We do.
They've got some more recent...
We just got some information, so we can provide that one. We provide the other.
I will point out, and just like I could, so I'm going to, one of the things we've done maybe this year with Dr. Sador, if you haven't checked your email today, there's an email waiting for you and I requested of your staff. Under general statutes, you can ask and appropriate money similar to the SBCC as you do to the public schools. And we've asked for the information from SBCC in a format similar by program and function and project as to what we get from UCPS with the intent that if the commission so chooses to appropriate the money to more finite programs and to projects specific. Right now, we don't really have that level of control or that level of appropriation with the, with SBCC. However, because they're becoming a larger department, now we're talking, related price act for all of that's right around forty-three million dollars, there has to be, I think you, it's getting, it's getting to be a substantial contribution, there has to be some additional internal control structure around it. We made that request in the interest of time. We didn't necessarily come back and ask and do that, ask for that information. Because I only have three more meetings with you before the budgets presented. So, keep that in mind. If you have an objection to that and I just go through that process, please let me know now. But we felt like today, talking about it, I needed, we needed to move that process along because I gave them three weeks to put it together and I wanted to give them time to do it. I didn't.
And that's the same process we have UCPS do.
Right. They'll send it over, you know, like you see instruction.
Right.
That kind of stuff. I'm not exactly sure what the charter council's like on the community call side, but it, the process is very similar to how it is for UCPS.
And something I, I guess I would like you to look at, and I alluded to it earlier, was with the early college, what is the dollar amount of our local funding that's going to UCPS to take care of the students that are being housed at SBCC? And so, I'd kind of like to see what, what that dollar amount is and...
The total amount, I think, that's contributed state, federal and local, is about seven, I believe. Is that the right number? Is it, am I high?
No, that's about right. Seven, seven and a half.
About seven. I think our contribution, I want to say, is around four, but don't hold me to that. We'll have to go back and look at that.
If, if, if we're, a capacity of four hundred students, if I understood correctly, what is the dollar amount that should be going to SBCC to provide for those students that's currently going to UCPS?
It doesn't work by charter schools. Like, for instance, charter school, they slide the first student, the funding they get from the county give it. On, on SBCC, the funding they get is from state in the form of FTEO. Not, they don't get any of the operating money from the current expenses.
Is that state statute?
I don't...
Or is that our county policy?
Like, if, if they went to UCPS to ask, I'm sure UCPS can figure out how to give it to them. That's up to them. I don't, we, we give them about a million eight, a little less than, I'm sorry, about a million seven last year plus the capital. So, we, on the county side, we give them quite a bit from that perspective, but nowhere near twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred dollars a student. I think that's what our contribution is.
Well, without belaboring the point, I, I guess I just would like to know how much of that, those funds should be going to SBCC.
We can tell you what the first, probably pay for students in UCPS.
We'll just include that in the next presentation. That'd be great.
And these students are at SBCC one hundred percent of the time. Correct.
They spend their entire day there.
So, that in mind, unless you have something else from me, you can see the report, folks at home watching, if you want to read it. It's going to be on our website tomorrow. We'll prepare some stuff and I believe our next, the sixteenth, meet your Wheaties because it's going to be a fairly long discussion and full evening. So, with that, Commissioner, back to you.
All right. Appreciate it. Motion to adjourn for special meeting?
Aye.